So I'll turn it off over there so you don't have feedback.
No, you should be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Here.
Tracy Ellen?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Annette?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
John?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Al?
Here.
In accordance with PL 1975, Chapter 231, notice of tonight's meeting was mailed to the record in the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2022. Notice that this meeting was mailed to the borough clerks and was posted on the bulletin boards of the Board of Education, office, and administrative buildings on the same date. The results of the election. Oradel Barbara Kusar, 1,977. Allen Feigenstein, 1,414 for River Edge. Stephanie Hartman, 2,275. I will now do the oath.
Killed it.
What?
You killed it.
She did.
Please join me.
With a larger population. Percentage wise, it might have been the same.
Please join me for the oath, Stephanie?
Oh, we're doing it together?
Yes.
Oh, can you?
Oh, I love this.
Oh, I need my glass. If you want me to read something, I need my glass.
Okay.
Can you mess up the names just for like whole time saving?
Ours are pretty standard.
Okay. Please raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Allen Feigenstein, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
And this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I state your name, do solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Allen Feigenstein, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of the member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in New Jersey S 18A:12-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in New Jersey S 18A:12-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That seems very special. You guys sounded pretty good. We did our well, right?
We had a lot of practice.
Well, I have to tell you, it was a little bit like learning grammar. She's got the sentence fraction.
I'm asking you to call Mr. Pepe anymore.
Okay, so I'm gonna now take nominations for the president, please. Allen?
I nominate Albrecht for president.
Any other nominations? Okay, I'll take roll call. Claudia?
Uh, yes.
Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Al?
Abstain.
Okay, I turn the meeting over to you, Al.
Um, okay. Take nominations for the office of Board Vice President, please.
I'll make a motion, Stephanie Hartman.
I will second that.
I'll second.
Claudia. Any other nominations for Vice President, Board Vice President? Trudy?
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
No.
Al?
Yes.
It's irrelevant. And the year before.
Okay. Any board member comments on the agenda? The rest of the reorg agenda? It's basically a lot of housekeeping. I will take this in.
If I may, I just, two quick comments, please. Normally, there's two other resolutions that appear on this agenda, one of which is the readoption of our curriculum. As you are all aware, we're being CUSAC'd this year. The curriculum that we all approved in the summertime and the spring and then in September has been submitted to the county office. We are waiting for their final imprimata. Once we receive that, I'll bring that resolution back at our next, whatever meeting is appropriate. Secondly, there's also an item on here that we're not, that we're missing, which is unfortunate, for an unfortunate reason. We, during the holiday break, we lost our longtime treasurer, Erwin "Cubby" Cohen. He passed, and there was a memorial service for him last week. Cubby was a real character, if anybody had the opportunity to meet him. He was a man who bled black and gold. He is the father of three graduates of Riverdale. He served on our board for 17 years, back in the 70s and the 80s. And then he became our treasurer of school monies back in 1995. So he is a guy who's had almost a 50-year relationship with us in the board. He was also, as I said, a character. You could recognize him by his jaunty berets that he would wear on his head. And he was also quite an accomplished singer, piano player, and guitar player. And if you were ever had the good fortune of being around him, when he would burst into song, it would just make you fill up along the way. So it's sad that we lost him, so there's no appointment of a treasurer on here. That happened so quickly. We will be working together. Trudy and I make a recommendation to you after that. Thank you.
Thank you. I will take these in buckets of five. I'll briefly describe each of the five resolutions that we're voting on, if that's okay with everybody. So the first five would be, number one, just the law firm of Fogarty and Hara being reappointed for the board attorney. Number two is to reappoint Dr. Stephen Varhol as the school physician. Number three is to appoint Dr. Thomas Plittigliari and Christopher Mendler as trained concussion management physicians from January 1 through the next reorg meeting. And number four is basically signatures, authorized signatures, for the various banking accounts or checking accounts that we have here at the, in the district. And number five is the establishment of the petty cash accounts for the calendar year of 2023 for the board office at $1,000 and the athletic account of $7,000. So may I have a motion for these first five? Allen, second.
I'll second.
Stephanie?
Just one moment, please, if you would.
Sure.
In light of what I had just mentioned to the board regarding the loss of our treasurer, our treasurer's on the check. Obviously, he won't be able to be signing it for a while, so with your agreement, the item number four, TD Bank General Account, if we could make that two signatures instead of three. So the three signatures normally are the business administrator, the board president, and the treasurer. Obviously, we don't have a treasurer, so it would still be the board president and the business administrator.
Which one are you on?
Item number four, general account.
Okay, for how long can we, time bounded, there's a reason why we have three signatures, right?
It's not required. It's been a policy that you've had before.
I know, but I think we had three. Is there a reason to reduce it to two? We understand the circumstances, but.
For the time being.
For how long?
Until we figure out how we're gonna fill that position. Because otherwise, we can't issue the checks because we don't have his, he can't.
Why don't we do it through our first meeting in March? And at that time, if we need to extend it, then we can revisit that again. Is that?
First meeting is March, is March 13th.
So until March 13th, and if we need to.
Because you got another one, Pat, if you go down a few more accounts.
Cafeteria.
The net payroll account, you got cafeteria account, you got a number of them, I think.
Those are all.
There's only two, right?
Right.
There's one more cafeteria account.
Cafeteria that needs three signatures.
Yeah, so that would be.
To make that one, too.
So there's two adjustments.
And how about the net payroll account, that one is okay? Or one signature. Sure, shall be required.
Treasurer of school or business, okay. And one signature on that one, yes.
Okay, then.
Cafeteria account, right.
Then we gotta avoid the motion.
Okay, wait, hold on.
TD cafeteria account are the two.
That's it.
Can we, so what are the, what are the accounts that need to be changed? Unemployment compensation trust requires two signatures. Treasurer of schools and business administrator. Community development also requires the same two. And so does the flex, no, not the flex.
Right, so we'd have to, we'd have to change treasurer of school monies to president, board president.
So I'm gonna make a motion to change any of the accounts that require three signatures to two signatures, and any of the accounts that currently state treasurer of monies and board, excuse me, business administrator, to be business administrator and board president through March 13th.
I'll second that.
Yep. Thank you.
Stephanie. Claudia, second.
Okay, so what do we do with the original motion?
That died. It died.
It died.
It died. We're on a new motion. This is the, the motion to change that.
Yep.
And that's what we'd be voting on for number four.
Right, okay.
But we need a motion on the change, and then we can go back to the consent.
Do you have a motion?
You did, you did that. We need to vote on the change. So, right, we need to vote on the change.
Right, so I motioned to.
We motioned.
We did.
Now, you're just going through the roll call on, you're voting on the change. At this, at this roll call, we're voting on the change, not, not one to four, not one to five.
Okay.
Voting on the change? Yes. I have to think.
Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
So now I have to go back and do the motion, roll call on one, two, three. Okay. Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes, as amended.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
When you write it, it has to say amended.
Changes to number four. Okay, the second bucket of five. Number six, the official notices for the BOE meetings will be published in the record of the Star Ledger. Number seven, list the regular Board of Education meetings for the calendar year of 2023. Number eight is, a person shall be designated by the board president to be appointed delegate of Burton County School Boards Association and the New Jersey School Boards Association. Number nine is to readopt all textbooks currently in use, including those approved on an individual basis. Number 10 is recommended by the superintendent that the board reaffirm its approval of all previously formally approved policies in the Riverdale Regional Board of Education, of the Riverdale Regional Board of Education. May I have a motion on each second five?
I'll make a motion.
Claudia? Allen? Trudy?
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Al?
Yes. Okay, the third bucket, starting with 11. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board authorize the business administrator to permit individual companies such as tax shelters and other personal benefit groups to solicit for membership only at mutually convenient times and places within the buildings, provided that these companies have an initial enrollment of 5% of the eligible personnel. Number 12, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education members will abide by the New Jersey School Board Member Code of Ethics. 13, procurement of goods and services through state agency for the calendar year of 2023. 14, Burton County have joined together to form a joint insurance group as permitted by New Jersey. And down below, it says, whereas the Board of Education of the Riverdale Regional School District has determined that membership in the Northeast Burton County School Board Insurance Group is the best interest of the district. And number 15 is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of Gertrude, AKA Trudy Engel, as board secretary through June 30, 2023.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Stephanie and Claudia, thank you.
Claudia?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Al?
Yes. Okay, the next bucket starts with 16. The governing body hereby appoints Gertrude Engel as the qualified purchasing agent, and be further acknowledged that the. and be further acknowledged that the bid threshold be $44,015% of that, $6,600, without soliciting competitive quotations. Number 17, the business administrator to execute all emergency repairs for the calendar year of 2023 and report to the board upon completion. Number 18, this is the maximum amount for conference mileage for the 22-23 school year, is $53,135. In addition, the maximum amount for conference mileage for 23-24 school year would be $55,000. The superintendent may authorize travel excluding overnight for staff members between board meeting dates. Number 19, superintendent and board secretary let the board approve the 2022-2023 purchasing manual, which is located in the board office. And number 20, it is recommended by the superintendent and board secretary that the board approve the 2022-2023 standard operating procedure. I'm assuming this is a manual as well that's located in the board office. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Who'd you get for second, Matt? Alan? Doug?
Doug.
Doug, okay.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Doug.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes. Okay, I believe we're up to the last bucket of five. All right? Yes. There's some long ones in here. Okay. So, what do we start with? 21. It is recommended by the superintendent, the board secretary, that the board approve the asbestos management plan located in the board office. 22, it is recommended by the superintendent and the board secretary that the board approve the schedule of tax levy payments for the 2022-2023 school year as follows. And this is not determined by the school district. This is a state mandate, correct? The percentages.
This amount was the budget, part of the budget.
Yes, okay.
The payment schedule.
Yes, yes, that's dictated. Yes, it is dictated, yes.
Correct, it has nothing to do with us.
I misunderstood.
Okay. 23 is basically, I had emailed Trudy about this, and we belong to a group called ACERS, ACERS, and this group negotiates the best energy prices for both gas, which is number 23, natural gas services, and number 24, which would be the electric generation services. So, that's basically the Cliff Notes version of 23 and 24. Okay. And 25, which is the last... This is basically appointing an attorney to help us sell bonds for a potential referendum. Okay? May I have a motion, please?
I was gonna say, I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry?
I'll make that motion.
Oh.
I'll say. I have a question on 22, Trudy. And I think I asked this last year, too. Have you seen any undue burden by the payments from Oredell being split monthly to the school as opposed to being made quarterly, or...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
You see number 22?
Yes.
So, River Edge makes payments what appears to be quarterly? And Oredell is monthly. Does the monthly payment create any undue burden for the district?
No.
From a cash flow perspective?
No, it works fine.
It's okay?
Yes, it is. Thank you. Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes, I'm gonna abstain from 25.
From which one?
25, the last one.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Wait, did you vote, Al?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you? This is pretty hard, Ken.
Okay. Any public questions or comments on any of this? Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Claudia? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Claudia?
Here.
Tracy Ellen?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
Annette?
Here.
Stephanie?
Yes.
John?
Here.
Doug? Al. New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regular meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place thereof sent to the record and the Star Ledger newspapers, the constituent borough clerks and borough libraries, as well as posting in school district principal offices, faculty rooms, and the board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in the public school buildings or anywhere in school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to a fine not to exceed $100.
I will read the mission statement tonight. The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and other, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community in an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, and to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey student learning standards. We move into the public comments section of the agenda on agenda items only. There will be a segment at the end of the meeting for public comments on anything else pertaining to Riverdale Regional School District. Any public comments? Okay. The student reps are not here tonight. They all have...
All three contacted me separately, and they, all three of them had a conflict with this evening.
Right, because typically, we do not have meetings on Tuesday, and that was probably, I think, a basketball game was a couple.
Internship, there's a couple of things going on.
Right, okay. My report tonight is very brief. I just wanted to offer condolences to the family of Erwin Cohen. You know, I received the notice, I believe Stephanie had sent it out, and then Patrick also sent it out, so I wanted to offer condolences on behalf of the board to his family. Second, I did see something come by through newjersey.com, and apparently, when I send these links over, nobody can open them, so I didn't bother this time.
It's always a fun exercise.
And nobody would tell me they can't open a link until about the fifth one that I sent, but that's okay. Yeah, good exercise. Our athletic director, Dennis Nelson, was ranked number eight in the top 40 North Jersey High School Power List. Besides holding the position of athletic director at Riverdale for the past 20 years, Dennis is also the executive director for the Super Football Conference. Under his supervision, the SFC has recently signed a new sponsorship deal, which will put them in a position to expand outside North Jersey. So, kudos to Dennis for that. Also, an email came through late this afternoon, I just want to mention, that this Thursday, January 5, we have a counseling department will be hosting the post-secondary planning meeting for the members of the junior class and their parents. Counselors will be providing important information regarding the college planning and post-secondary options. The meeting will begin at 7:00 PM and will be virtual. Just look at the email dated January 3 at 3:00. There's a link on there. It will be a virtual meeting, and there's a link to join that meeting. That's all I have for tonight, so I'm gonna pass it along to Patrick.
I don't have a report tonight, except to wish everyone a happy new year.
Very good. Happy new year to you. Committee reports, I don't believe any committee's met, but I'll run down the roster just to make sure. We did, okay. Budget and finance, Alan?
We haven't met.
Nothing. Facilities, Doug?
Nothing, no.
Okay. Community relations, Tracy Ellen?
Nothing, no.
Curriculum, Stephanie?
Well, I mean, only temporary reporting is last year. All the committees could change, but as you, as everybody got that mammoth packet that Patrick provided everyone, and you can see that there were a variety of curricular suggestions, directions in there, as well as some decisions to move forward for the fall. And so, not all of that information was approved and is moving forward. Some of it is still in discussion. But one of the changes, actually, more of the changes were at the middle school. And changes to the scheduling that exists now with that 1.25, is that correct? 1.25 period for English and 1.25 period for math, and how they will reorient that for the 7th grade going forward. And then, the possibility of the addition of another elective in the 8th grade and how all the electives play out. And then, there was one approval of a new course, which was an expansion of physics? No.
Biology.
Biology. I was like, it's one of the sciences. The expansion in all of the other sciences, right? In all of the other sciences, we, it is currently portioned out at three different levels discreetly, and biology was not that way. So, we expanded to be able to allow for a level that went at a better pacing and at a better orientation to the subject matter for the students that might elect that elective.
Okay, thank you. Policy?
So, we also met on the 19. A while back last year, Pat had reached out in anticipation for CUSAC to do a wellness check of our policies, which he had to then call back and kind of follow up with them, and we did receive that. There are not many that we really have to go back and look at. We've been pretty good with this. And then, we have on for tonight's policy, the 3,000 series, 3327 relation with vendors, and 3515 smoke and prohibition. And that's it for us in our meeting.
Right, okay. Let's move into the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the consent agenda?
I have a question about how we approve certain groups for their trips, like we have the cheerleaders here with the trip that we're approving for Disney versus other groups who want to go, who get declined before it even comes to the board. How's that decision get made? You know, what gets authorized and what doesn't, and what comes to the board for vote?
Well, let me, let's be...
You're referencing international trips?
Any trips. Because not everything comes to the board.
The one that's been declined has been international.
I just want to clarify that, you know, sometimes there's a misconception that the board declines something. But, you know, that doesn't, those decisions don't always come to the board. They are made by administration and maybe by you, too, but I'm not clear.
Correct. So, our procedure is that we have a trip approval process, and day trips as well as overnight trips follow the same process, where whether it's a teacher, or a coach, or an advisor, in some way, one of the adults involved with the program will make a, will complete the form and submit it to their principal for approval. And then, the principal will review, because what we try to do is try as best we can not to impact the academic schedule. And then, we look to see if it's age-appropriate in some instances. And then, the principal will make the recommendations up to me, and then, I will, if I agree with it, I'll bring it forward. If not, I'll stop at then. So, the board is required to approve overnight trips, but not everyday trips. So, there's like hundreds that go on during the course of the school year, but you don't see any of that, right?
Okay, so if it gets declined at the principal level or the superintendent level, the board would not see it, so we wouldn't vote on it?
Correct.
Okay. And for those teachers, or the parents, or whatever the groups are, what's the recourse when something gets denied?
They come back through that same process, where they'll speak with the advisor to determine what the reason might be, then they'll speak to the principal, and then ultimately, with me.
So, on the forms that get submitted when it gets rejected, do you provide that feedback to the teacher or staff?
Sure.
Who submitted it?
Sure.
Okay, so, there seems to be maybe some confusion on the process, but let me get a little more info, and I'll share it with you. Thank you.
Any other questions on the consent agenda?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes. Okay, the first vote outside consent is under B, resignations and retirements. Number one, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board accept with regret the resignation due to retirement of student assistance counselor Randy O'Neil effective June 30, 2023. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Claudia?
Yes, and I wish her well.
Alan?
Yes. Thank you for your service.
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes, and I hope Dr. O'Neil enjoys her next endeavor.
Al?
Yes, and thank you for your service to Riverdale.
And just as we've done in each one of these, we, in our first meeting in June, when we have our service recognition, when we have our service recognition, we will have a more formal presentation to retirees.
Okay. The second vote outside consent is number eleven miscellaneous A. It is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the first reading of the following policies. Three, three thousand series, thirty-three twenty-seven relations with vendors, and thirty-five fifteen smoking prohibition.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Claudia?
I'll sit down.
Stephanie? And this is the first reading?
Mm-hmm.
Second reading would be the next meeting, correct? Okay. Trudy?
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Tracy Ellen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Al?
Yes. That brings us down to thirteen, fourteen. Old business, new business, board discussion. Stephanie?
So, we approved the board calendar?
We did.
Yes, we did. And all I would say is that depending on how the next few months go, we might want to consider adding another meeting in August, if we proceed in a direction to have things in the fall that would require probably a little bit more time from us. So, at the moment, it's not necessary, but people might want to just...
Yep.
Keep that on the radar.
Because there is currently no August meeting planned, so that's it.
Correct. Or two in July, you know?
Yep. Okay. Perfect. Anybody else have anything? I just wanted to, I know we have a possible referendum on the horizon, and I think we've all come to the conclusion that hustling for a September vote doesn't seem prudent. I mean, if, if that's our goal, I think we need to... The facilities had the, what's the word I'm looking for? We had Frank, the architect, you know, come and give a presentation of the building for us. That is something I want the entire board to see. So, I don't know if we can call some kind of, find out his schedule, and then maybe get an executive session planned, so that the entire board can see that proposal, his presentation. Is this something that's feasible?
Yeah, it would be public.
Public.
Okay. Public then, public meeting.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So, check his calendar ASAP, I guess, and then we can kind of put it to our calendar?
Sure.
Because I do want the rest of the board to see, this is very important, and I thought it was a very good proposal. I hope the rest of the facilities committee agrees with that.
Could we bar for meetings?
I don't know that we wait until the next meeting.
The next one is January seventeenth.
Um...
We'll, we'll see what it's about, though.
Okay.
So, you bring in the band, Pat? What do you think? Is Atlantic City banned? No? They make it for a good meeting.
It would be a good meeting. They're pretty good.
They were.
So, I guess, shoot for that.
The only thing, oh, I was gonna say is, prior, I feel like prior to that, the board itself needs to determine certain factors on the direction it wants to go.
Like my wheel stinkies.
Because, because they presented a lot of information to us, and it's very broad, you know, I mean, it's broad-based to, I'll say, you know, very minute, in-the-gras details. And there's a lot of it that I think we, you know, I think if the board has an agreement at a, at a higher, like at a ten-thousand-foot level about like what the main buckets of where we want to go on certain things, that presentation will be more beneficial, because we'll focus on those items and not, you know, I'll say, the Bible of what can possibly happen at the school.
I think it should only be...
One and two.
Right.
Well, or whatever, but I, but I, yeah, but I think there is like a broad base of like, like where does, you know, yes, there are things we want to modernize in the school, that's great, but like, more of a broad-based understanding of where the board wants to go, I think is needed truthfully before that presentation.
Like...
I don't know if we can, I mean, I don't know, I'm not sure what the best way to achieve that. I don't know if that's something we can, is that something we can discuss in executive, or is that, like, that has to be out in public? Okay.
So, you're suggesting something before the seventeenth, possibly? And then the seventeenth with the proposal from the architect?
I think the seventeenth is fine, yeah, but we have to, I think we have to come to a little bit of consensus on, on what lane we want to, what, what lanes we want to drive down. Otherwise, I feel like it's the presentation to the, to the committee, which is very broad-based, and there's a lot of great information there, but we're not gonna really walk away with a decision. And we're gonna go through, I think, a lot more information in that meeting than it's probably necessary.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's really a conversation based on this packet, because...
Particularly executive summary, yeah.
Yeah. Because you, you know, everybody's given information as to what could come about, either curricularly or building improvement-wise, and infrastructure-wise, because some of it's technology. And then, right, then you have sort of an executive summary of the bullets, but that doesn't mean we're constrained just to that, if there's something from the other information that somebody wants to look at, or something outside of that. But, yeah, I mean, we have, we have to look at, are those all things that we want to do? Do we even think that's the right direction? Is this something we're gonna do? Where's the money coming from? How many things go in regular, you know, budget?
Capable improvement.
And how many things would go into a referendum if that's the direction that we go on? And I don't know if we can do that in thirty minutes in executive.
Mm-hmm. And I don't know that we can get that accomplished by February third, either, if we're looking for a September vote.
I think Pat just said it can't be executive issues.
Right. It's a public discussion.
So, it doesn't have to do with...
Okay, so, I think we've been like tiptoeing around. I just feel like there's like a group of us that keep saying, potential referendum? And then there's a group of people that are like, yeah, but no, we're doing the referendum. So, I think that's first and foremost, like, we need to sit around and talk in public in front of all of you to have the discussion, and yet we just seem to skirt around it, and nobody ever talks about it. And Pat did give us, he supplied, I think we were the last group, policy and curriculum that received the executive summary, and then, or it went home to everybody.
Went home to the balance, the following...
To the balance, okay. So, did everybody read it? Just out of curiosity?
The big packet, that was...
The big packet, okay.
Yes.
So, I mean, I, I, I know we have another meeting, but it's like, can we start to have a conversation? Because Al is right, time is ticking, and we're, we're running out of time for a September date.
So, is, is one way, is one way to go about that, to say, okay, each committee that has an impact on the school should provide some consensus on, on, you know, so if there's a, if there is curriculum that we, that we have an initiative on in the next five years, right, or wherever we're going to, like long-range, is there some kind of facilities, or, you know, technology, or whatever, that ha, that we would have to do to make that happen? And then, you know, whether it's, you know, I mean, obviously, facilities, facilities committee, I mean, that's kind of very broad-based, and yes, we can come up with a ton of things that, you know, would fall into that pocket, but...
I just want to mention, I did not get a big packet. You did, you got it at the curriculum meeting.
I did not get the executive summary.
Yeah. I'm, I'm the last, the last three pages.
You probably just don't look at it like an executive...
No, but like...
No, no, no. And, and we got it in our curriculum meeting, too. I'm not, I'm not, you just probably aren't looking at it like it was an executive summary. It was like the little pages that said...
So...
If someone can just pass that along, because I'm echoing what Tracy's saying, that being said, was it the packet that delineated the...
Board district calls.
These are what they're calling the executive summary?
But, I'm sorry...
Oh, but you said big packet.
Because it came in this big packet.
Oh.
It came in this whole...
Sorry.
No, no, you don't, no.
It's the, it's the report I distributed, dated December nineteenth, board district calls.
Right. That's, and that, I have that.
Right. And the last four or five pages...
I'm missing a big packet.
The last four or five pages is the executive summary.
It's front and back, so it is rather large.
And I believe that also included then the suggested timelines of, if we were going to accomplish a referendum, then the, the timeline that we needed to follow, we were gonna go through, a September, or a December, or a following date? Because we had one of the, that was, I suggested also.
I think I gave that to you before.
That was, yeah, that was before that.
Yes, you have that. If anybody's missing anything, let me know.
And you guys, can you go to that? So, no, I'm fine, I will, I will redo.
Frank, sorry, I thought it was an additional big packet you were talking about, and I got nervous.
May, may, we, I think really, we should put this on for January seventeenth, to have a, a formal discussion in front of everybody. And, and the outcome of that, and if you could, maybe there'd be a date or two, it's, tell me the person's name, our architect, I'm sorry.
Frank.
It is Frank, okay? I was, I was concerned I was gonna say it. So, perhaps Frank could give us a date, like the week after, like a couple of dates the week after that, and then at that meeting, whatever comes out, then he could come and comment on that, on, on those things.
So, you don't want him?
Does that make sense?
I don't want him at the next meeting.
No. I, I think that's, I think that's putting the cart before the horse, and I think that's a lot of wasted time for him and for us.
Okay, so it'll be on the next agenda?
I don't know if I agree, but...
The packet he prepared is the packet he prepared. If he comes January seventeenth, he can take you guys through the same presentation...
We have it all. We have it all.
We have that.
We have all of that. What we now need to do is say, this is what we want to do.
Let me finish maybe for you, and then maybe see if you agree or disagree, right? That packet, him walking us through it was helpful. Him walking us through the website and through the technology was useful, where the rest of the board had to go figure out on their own, he took us through that. It didn't take a long time. It probably took him fifteen minutes just to explain the architecture of what they put in place and how to read the document. If everybody looked at that and that's not of value, that's fine. It could be another meeting. But it could be helpful for people who maybe are not, didn't have the time, or haven't navigated the two extensive reports they put together, one for the middle school and one for the high school. And they had floor plans that they kind of mapped out what their recommendations were with the tier one through four. And then, on top of that, there was the recommendations that I think came from the superintendent and the administration. I don't think we met either Buildings and Grounds or Finance to compare what administration came up versus what the architect came out with, to see, you know, where they kind of merged. And then I, I agree with Doug in that, you know, the committees, maybe, if, if there is a specific list in mind of focus areas, I think that's what we're, we're missing from the boards. The two committees that probably looked at this a lot have a sense from the facilities' perspective, but not from, you know, the executive summary from this bigger report, or trying to correlate it with the administration. So, I, I don't think anybody's skirting around or avoiding it, I just don't think we've had the structure to pull together all that information to say, okay, you know, the board as a whole, or individuals can support specific items, and what do they cost? Do we want to do that? And what, what goes where? Budget versus, you know, referendum? So, we could delay the architect past the seventeenth. I'm not sure the architect is gonna prepare anything more, they, they could, more than the report that they generated already, because it might have everything that people were asking for. And the, the report they generated was meant to be pick and choose. They weren't pushing a specific thing, that was their assessment of the facilities, and they said, you can pick and choose line items, and we've given you basically budgetary numbers for you to figure out what those types of things would cost. That's what I thought was very valuable, for them to take us through all those, you know, documents, and it made a lot of sense to us.
So, then, wouldn't it be smart for us, so wait, wouldn't it be smart for us then to sit and do our kind of like almost pick and choose next week, and then have them come and present to us what it would cost and what...
And that's, that's kind of what I was going, like, I don't disagree with your, your analysis, but I think because part of their presentation was the pick and choose and putting that budget together, if we, if we, as a board, focus or come up with what we big picture want, we can go, we can, Trudy can go back to them and say, okay, here are the key focuses, now take that report, update that, you know, update those numbers and those budgets, and then they can come in and we can, they can take us through those areas more in, like, depth.
You can fine-tune his presentation.
You can fine-tune the presentation just to focus on those areas, instead of going through like, you know, one through four.
You could. But look, you suggested in the last meeting, maybe the committees can do some of this work, right? Without waiting for board meetings where Pat, in the last meeting, set out two ideal dates. And one of them was, if we want to meet some sort of a September date, it'd be February third, which we couldn't do. It would have to be February thirteenth at the earliest, right? It would be the, the, the date we just got for the meeting. The next one was May fourteenth, in order to hit the December date.
The December vote.
So, we could take our time and, and, you know, slow it down a little bit. It goes back to what Al said in the beginning of this thing, that if we want to hit September, either we need to add more dates, or you gotta make those meetings work. There isn't a lot of dates left. There's two board meetings between now and that February date to hit September-type timeline.
You think getting things cleared by the county would almost be impossible? I'm gonna say, Trudy, Trudy and yourself, Patrick. Even if we did get something together by February three, that would be cutting it very close, getting it through the county?
It's more the state.
Through Trent.
So, the state is a more difficult part.
Through Trent, I'm sorry, for September.
Not that we can't get done, it's just gonna be, it'll be close.
And maybe we should explain for the board, or somebody should explain the, the difference between September versus December. Why would we push for a September date versus just waiting a few moments for December?
Well, if you fail in September, you can go back at it in December. If you fail...
That wasn't the driver, though, originally.
You asked an explanation, that's why people would push...
No, but I wasn't asking, I was asking Trudy, who originally put these dates out. If we do December, there was some implication, you know, either additional costs or something. What was that? What was the details of that?
The costs are the same, whether it's September or December. Because I was, originally, I, when we started way back when, I was suggesting September, because I thought coming off the summer, everything is new before it got into the holidays. So, that's why originally I suggested September.
Before December.
Correct.
Well, we, we all did, just to kind of bring everybody back, we hired the architect last March, or April, with the specific instructions to get us to a place where we could have a conversation about a September referendum. That's what we asked them to do. They were delayed, which has pushed the timeline a little bit, but that's what we asked them to do. So, collectively, we said, we're gonna shoot for the September referendum if we want to, if we're, if we decide to do a referendum. Statistically speaking, it's the most, it's the best day to have a referendum, is the September one. However, the plus or minus between having it September versus December is relatively small. The other dates in the calendar have a lot less viability that are available. So, your best dates to do a referendum are September or...
December.
December, right. You can do one on the annual election day, but you, it's the same as trying to hit your September deadline. So, those are the two best days, if you look at statistically what passes. So, I mean, that's the, that's the basic theory behind it. And then, what we asked Frank to do was to give you a timeline associated with what needed to be done in order to arrive at a September deadline or a December. A September referendum or December, that's what we told him to do, to give you those, which is what he did.
Plus, the, the other thing that we have to think of is, you're gonna be spending a lot of time in the next eight weeks on the superintendent's search. So...
That's true.
How many dates are there?
Not enough.
Look, this is why Pat last time suggested use of the committees more to help the board, not for the committees to make any decisions, but have the committees, because it's easier to get three people together without waiting for board meetings, to do some of the legwork.
But we're beyond that, because now, as a board, we need to decide, what are we choosing to do? Are we doing a referendum? If we are, how much? What's included in it? How, what, what curricular things? What technology things? What infrastructure things? What's included? That's where we're at, right now.
That's where we're at right now.
I know, but without the committees coming back with some list, go ahead, we can, you know, we're here tonight, we can discuss it tonight. But don't we need to do some prep work, just so it's not all over the place?
Well, that's why we were saying, put it on the seventeenth.
Yeah, I, I think, if we do it on the seventeenth, everybody needs to go home and read this two and three and four times.
Yeah.
And look at the report from the architect that you have a link for.
Right.
Because, basically, when you go through it, you don't have to understand everything that's written in there, but he, he, his firm created a prioritized system. One, do it. Two, think about it.
Right.
Three, weigh down on your line, it's great if you could, not if you have. And four is, you know, something else. Because, remember, what it is, is he didn't look at just the referendum, he looked at the building needs all over, all over, because it's huge. I mean, it's like, you know, eighty million or a hundred million dollars worth of work that's in there. There's no way where you're even going to talk about that.
No.
But if you go backwards...
Pat, the other one is the memo you guys produced, which had your list of items.
Right.
Correct, I gave you that.
It also should be taken into account.
Right, and it's expanded just a hair, I think, in the executive summary of the report I gave you before Frank. I think it's just a little bit more...
There's one or two additions.
One or two items, but not much. But yes, you're, you're correct, John.
But I also think the recommendations from the administration, like, I would like more understanding. So, there are a list of items, right, which is great, but I, like, I don't, I didn't see the why. Like, what does that get, like, if we do, if we refurbish this room, right? What is, like, what does that get us in the future? Is it just, hey, we're getting an, you know, updated finishes in a room? Or is there some program that goes with that? And why do we pick, you know? Like, I would like that kind of understanding from the administration side, because I think that's the way the board's gonna, at least that's the way, I'm going to analyze how that fits into the whole picture, along with maybe what the board wants, and then, and then the items, and then the items that are, like, I'll say, mu, like, more facilities items, which are the must, like, long-term, probably must-haves that we have to do, you know, whether it's, like, upgrading the, you know...
Ventilators.
Ventilators, or something that we know, we know down the road, we're going to have to do at some point, no matter what.
We're prepared to have that conversation.
So, Trudy, did...
Some of it's in there.
What we hired the architect for, did that include creating that presentation packet, or that, that's extra?
That was part of it.
So, when we are ready, when the board is ready, they will help create a presentation packet?
That last packet, I think, isn't an additional...
You know, the one he showed us as a sample?
That you would go to the community with?
That'll be all part of the referendum, if we go, if we move forward to do it, that will be part of that.
Because he showed us that last segment of his presentation, I think was above and beyond what he put together for us.
But she's saying that would be, since they're the architect of record, it would be part of their packet, knowing full well that gets them work. And that's where you would pull that why and the various cost elements of including it in the budget versus using it in the referendum, where there was substantial subsidy by doing it as part of the referendum.
Correct. We're prepared to have that conversation.
This, um, December eighth?
Yeah.
Where you have the high school administrator, is there any way possible to fix a dollar amount? Or is that just way too detailed?
Well, for instance... I think if you look at, it's a good question, but I think if you look at the memos that I've provided to you, that Trudy and I have provided to you, and look at the report that the architect gave you, I would say ninety percent of those items are on there. So, yeah, we could give you, we could put a number on it for you.
Okay.
Pretty quickly.
December eighth referendum recommendation email, Trudy? It has the high school and the middle school listed. If we could get dollar amounts for each one of these recommendations, I think it'll help us when we sit down to, at a glance, so to speak.
Sure.
Okay, so, we're just gonna do January seventeenth roundtable.
Come prepared.
And...
Read the packet.
Read it a couple of times.
Come with little sticky.
There's a lot of information, both sides.
No architect, though, right?
No.
No architect.
No, not yet.
We'll still check his calendar for one or two hours.
Circling and ready. Uh, anything else, old business, new business, or board discussion? Anybody? Okay. Uh, public comments? Anything pertaining to Riverdale Regional School District? Nothing behind the camera? No, you're just waiting to get out of here, I guess. Okay.
They're honest, given that.
Um, we need to make a...
Motion to adjourn. I make that motion.
No, no. We need to make a motion to go into executive, correct?
Correct. I make that motion. I like my motion.
Claudia, and Stephanie, you?
I will second that.
Okay.
Am I not going to come out with any...
No, we will not exit with any...
Actionable items.
Correct, any actionable items, as Stephanie reminds me.
All in favor? Aye.
Are you going in there?